Welcome back. We're a little bit early. Wait a couple more minutes to start back up and get everybody settled. And again, if you're on before the system, when Ed said something, just decided to reboot itself. So we can't determine whether it's like Ed is speaking to the IT gods or
Wasn't me.
It's like Amazon. If you talk about it, then all of a sudden, the next thing you know, it shows up on your everything that advertises for Amazon.
Yeah.
They need to turn the power off. Ed, can you put the name in the backstage for me?
I'll try to do that.
I'm back, but I need to get a glass of water. I'll be right back.
Get one for me, too?
Okay.
If I use that right, I just sent it to you, Kevin.
Ooh, as a direct message notice.
I'll take a moment and repeat to all of the members who are currently watching the trustee meeting that we are at 512 individual attendees. So you guys are really making this happen and Todd and I really appreciate your having joined this Narcon.
Yeah, this is great. And I'm glad I didn't take you up on your offer, Ed, to make it so that you got a percentage of the overall take. You're overpaid as it is.
Oh, yeah. And double it, please.
All right, let's get started back. And the next topic we want to talk about are these virtual events. And I was joking just when we started back up that I walked downstairs and my wife is having a similar kind of meeting for work and their board is meeting. And they were discussing how do they move forward in a in this new world and doing virtual meetings and how to deal with providing content and what to do with it, et cetera. So it's pretty interesting that it's not just our problem. But so what I'd like to do is just sort of go around the board again. And I don't know that I'm looking at this for this particular one specifically for Ask, but we'll know it if we see it, if we want to do something in the form of memorializing part of the discussion and emotion. But really what I'm interested in is finding out sort of, okay, so we're in this virtual, we're doing virtual events now. And as Ed said, that we have over 500 attendees now who have signed up and will be attending our event. So do we want to continue with this even post COVID? And if so, what kind of form do we want to have it? Do we want to have hybrid events where we have a mixture of in-person and virtual content? We're gonna have it at your house, Ed. I called dibs on the rubber duck ring in your pool.
Tabachi ball court now.
Oh, darn. So but anyways, let's go around and, you know, what are people's thoughts on in terms of in this sort of brave new world, do we want to continue with this virtual meeting format? And if so, you know, what are your thoughts on having a virtual only versus some kind of mixture? And what do you see the future? I'm not sure how it sort of populates this, but Lynn, your icon is right next to mine. So you get to go first.
Oh, lucky me. Well, thank you, John. I don't think that I would, I don't think I want to be exclusively virtual when we don't have to be. One of the things that attracts me to events and my schedule has not let me get to very many Narcons. It's true. But being around other people is a big part of the attraction. Sometimes the rockets on occasion almost become just an excuse to go and hang out with my friends. But there's also the part of talking with the manufacturers and seeing the products, for example, and easier interaction in some of the sessions. I wouldn't mind if we had a mixed format, you know, there might be some events like the town hall could be done online as opposed to just in person if we were having an in-person event. And Ed might be getting grumpy over there. I haven't been on the delivery side of a hybrid event, so I'll defer to them as to how painful that is. And I'm sure it's not trivial, but there's, there are parts of the in-person that we just don't replicate in an all-virtual event. And I would miss those if we did that exclusively.
Okay, great. No, thank you. And I tend to agree that for me, a big part of doing these events is being in person and doing the face-to-face interactions with different people and a lot of the friends and colleagues I've met over the years. But I also see the power in doing this kind of virtual event and how it has really opened up the potential. I mean, who would have thought even six months ago that we would have over 500 people sign up? Or, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought it was possible.
Good, good. Well, you made it come true. So Kevin, what do you think?
I think that we've run a couple of these now where we had kind of an ad hoc virtual Narum. And we had our growing pains there with the trying to do it through the Zoom links. And while that was a success, I think that there were some issues with that. I think this new platform is going to give us a little bit better idea about how sustainable doing virtual events are. I like the idea that we can do something like a Narcon where we have the different tracks that are available for people that can't make the trip. But for our other events, you know, NSL was a flying event, right? NARAM was a flying event. You know, there could be the ability to have, you know, hybridize some of the things, like we do try to present some of the evening events at Narum as things that are available for people to look at through live streams and like that. We can try and do that with the platform. You know, a lot of our events outside of this one are geared around being at a certain place and doing an activity with the virtual. So I would prefer to get back to having in-person events. That's glad to see what the world looks like past this storm. But yeah, I think so far, things have gone fairly well with this event of the new platform versus what we did at Narum. And I think we can, you know, take the lessons learned from that and this. I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I think it has to be right for the event.
Okay. Ed?
Well, I want to acknowledge Andy Tomasz's statement in the Q and A, not to think of it as either/or and to simulcast in-person events for those who can't attend. Todd and I have, we've talked about this already. What I'd want to say specifically to that is the simulcasting of it is, I believe it's not currently, I don't know how easy it is to do, given the current manpower to be applied to it. I mean, take a, if you think in terms of if we were back in Tucson in March of last year, we would obviously need, we'd need a live stream from each of the three rooms on a device. Arguably, I would say is not somebody's cellphone. It needs to be better than that potentially. And we need the right, well, I'll say it, you know, a microphone or a pickup system to give, to deliver quality sound. And all of that is potentially largely at maybe out of distance. If you're shooting it from that perspective, the NAR doesn't currently own that equipment if we were to go that model. And so that's, that's a budgetary thing to be considered. And again, there's still the issue of somebody needs to start and stop the recording as needed in each of those sessions, in each of those three different rooms. So there's those logistical issues. And I'm just pointing these things out and in no way trying to suggest that, you know, Andy isn't making the most, you know, a valid, a very valid point. The flip side sort of to me is that 512 speaks volumes to me. If, again, if we were holding a mixed event, a mixed media event, if you will, as to the time and effort it takes to secure a hotel contract, to secure the attendance of the speakers, they have to show up. They have to, well, let's just say they, let's just say they're showing up live at the event. So you've, you're bringing all these components together. And what if the membership goes? The travel, the restaurants, and the hotel costs all mean I'm just going to stay home and watch it. If we had 125 people in Tucson last year, would we be holding an onsite event for 50 people and streaming out to 462 people? These are really unknowns. So there's a part of me that thinks that maybe we need to think in terms of we have, we can't replicate virtually, although I don't think the way John does, NSLs and Narums. I'm sure there are virtual components to those events, but Narcon in particular lends itself short of the inability of socializing, which you can't replicate. And for, from Lynn's point of view, the ability to visit the manufacturers and tire kick. So clearly she's not in the business model for Carvana. So all I can say is maybe we should strongly consider a second virtual Narcon and see where it goes. Because we can take, if the virtual tours work that we have planned, then a virtual Narcon by virtual tour point can take us anywhere. If we can get the, if I work far enough in advance with the people who can go in and make the recordings or do the live streams, we don't have to find a town with a venue, which has been the model for this national event now for a number of years. You got to find a place that has attraction for the members to show up there beyond the fact that they're going to sit and they're going to be in a hotel for a couple, for at least one day and sit through hours of, you know, of breakout sessions. So we could, we could be possibly having a tour of the Cosmodrome that I have yet to visit in a virtual environment, if I can make that happen. So I'll relinquish the floor at this point and thank you, Andy, for posing that comment.
Yeah, okay. I'll save all my comments to the end. Go ahead, Mark. And hey, Vern.
Yeah, shout out to Vern and welcome. I'm of two minds about it. I like the idea of giving our members as many different options as we can. The option of showing up in person, fabulous. The option of attending sessions that are live streamed, also fabulous. The staffing and tech requirements for live streaming are, live streaming an in-person session in a conference room are different from somebody doing it from their, their home office. So I recognize that. And so honestly, my answer would be a bold decisive question mark. I prefer the hybrid model. But I recognize Ed's concerns about, about perhaps depressing attendance at an in-person event. So so I reserve my God-given right to be wishy-washy, but I think if we can make a hybrid event practical, that's the way I would prefer to go.
Okay. Carol?
Sorry, I was on mute. So I like, obviously, seeing my Rocket family, even if it's only a couple of times a year, just like everyone else does. But I'm really enjoying the virtual Narcon. And obviously Narcon, as Ed said, it lends itself to being a virtual event. Yes, we miss out on the socialization part, but this being a, you know, a true conference, it's easy, it's, it's cheap. I mean, our vendors, the board of trustees, you know, being able to sit in my living room and attend is pretty nice. I actually like that aspect. I understand, and I agree with Ed's concern that having a hybrid event for something like Narcon, I think, could affect attendance. I mean, the attendance number for this event speaks for itself, over 500 people. We've, I think the highest attendance we've had at a Narcon, to my knowledge, is about 200. So this is obviously an easy way for people to join us, a much more affordable way for those who can't afford to travel. I like the idea, and I mean, we've talked about this before. I really like the idea of being able to get some of our events out to those people who can't travel. And maybe that's a matter of making Narum, have Narcon be virtual. NSL, you know, maybe there's a couple of things you could do virtually. And then maybe do some of the Narum events as a virtual thing, like broadcasting some of the R and D presentations or broadcasting, you know, like we've tried to share the awards banquet before. So a few things like that where we do have the ability to make it virtual so that people who aren't able to be there in person can still attend. And I saw Andrew's comment, too. There are definitely vendors and, you know, hotel venues, conference centers. They're going to have that service available where we could pay someone to set things up. It's, I'm sure it's a decent cost, but, you know, I think we have that option of trying to do some hybrid things, especially like at a Narum. You know, I'm not opposed to the in-person events. I just think that something like, especially a virtual Narcon, this has allowed so many more people in the hobby to attend who wouldn't otherwise be able to. So I'm going to be a little bit like Mark. I reserve my right to be wishy-washy because I really like both. I'm not seeing everyone in person, but this virtual event is fabulous. And I like that part.
Okay. Becky? I'll get back to you, Ed.
Yeah, so I'm kind of with Carol and Mark and also you, John, is the hybrid part. I like to go to the events, like Ed was saying, he would, he would rather be there and actually get to see it. Instead of seeing a virtual tour, yes, it's great. But if we were where we were supposed to be this year in Huntsville, there is nothing like walking into that museum and having that Saturn V above you. It just doesn't do it any good on the, a virtual tour to me. I, you don't have that like mouth dropping on the ground, kind of picking it back up. But for the people who can't afford it, I do agree that it is nice to have some of it at least. Maybe we can do the hybrid, like you say, have the tour for the folks who can't join us. And then those who can join be able to go in and, and see it in person because there's just nothing like it.
Okay. Ed, you had?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment back to what Carol was saying. She brought up some good hybridization opportunities. I think the ability to live stream R and D at Narum would be a fabulous opportunity to bring the membership into something that the membership, a huge amount of the membership never sees. And from the standpoint of eye candy, a live streaming of somebody literally walking, we'll just say with a, with a video device and providing commentary through the scale room or, you know, the craftsmanship room. Those are, those are special, unique opportunities to Narum that people don't get to see. Most of the coverage that you see in the magazine will be just a few photographs. And, and I always have been struck, for instance, by walking into the craftsmanship rooms when all the models have been turned in. That's, that's an amazing moment at Narum to me. And offers a unique opportunity to live stream something that would be short or, or whatever length of time the individual who wants to run that wants to make it. The same thing might be applicable in some ways, even in NSL with some creative thinking. So I just wanted to reflect on what Carol was mentioning.
Can I add on to that, too? So funny enough, this is something that's actually been on my to-do list, you know, from a social media aspect, to do like a tour of the scale model room. The difficulty, we did try doing it one year. The difficulty is once the room is open to all attendees, it's hard to get up to those models for anyone to see anything. So I think that that would be something, you know, I know Facebook Live isn't fabulous, but it's certainly a step toward inviting those people into the event who can't attend in person. But if we open up the room 15, 20 minutes, half an hour early and let me or someone, you know, someone in even just to Facebook Live it or something like that. But it would need to be before the room is open to the general public, just so that we could get up close in person.
You just need the backstage pass, Carol.
We, I think we can do that. I know, I know people. I'll have my people contact your people.
You do that.
Definitely it's on my list. And if there's anything else like that that we could do, you know, even as kind of a baby step toward doing something like that more virtual, it's certainly an option. I mean, it's easy enough to even just take a phone in there. And again, Facebook Live isn't perfect, but it's a good step toward having more people be available.
But if we could do it Facebook Live, we could do it using this platform.
That's very true. Yeah, we could use this. It's just Facebook Live is free. That's why we've used it in the past. But yeah, there's no reason we couldn't do this and go in there. The other thing, too, is we can stream from our YouTube channel. It's just that there's some limitations based on subscriber numbers and things like that that I can explain offline. But, you know, we can use our YouTube channel to stream live from that, too. So that's something to keep in mind, too. We haven't in the past. It's just we're slowly getting there. But it's certainly something to keep in mind. Facebook Live is just been my go-to because it's super easy to hit a button in the group, you know, and it just starts streaming. But there are definitely better options that we could use like this.
So so the comments weren't outside of the realm of what I thought I would get. But I guess I'd like to push us a little bit harder in that how can we think about this in a different way? So and I don't know that we necessarily know all the answers to questions like this, but if we go into the design of something like Narum or, I mean, Don saying, sorry, even with NSL, being able to show off parts of it would be interesting to people. I guess what I'm getting at is I think we're restricting ourselves to what we've always done in the past and trying to fit that into a new paradigm. I think we should be going out and let's see what the technology is and how can we merge the technology in with what we do? Sorry. I mean, I gotta go off. Okay, so, you know, yes, some of these things probably cost money. So let's figure out what, what is the cost? And if we get 500 people that are going to participate in an event and pay $25 to participate in that fashion, that could then cover our IT and platform costs, then, you know, we're ahead of the game. And, you know, I realize we rely heavily on volunteers. Or Ed's going, oh, my God, what am I getting, was he getting me into? But let's it could be successful.
I've seen him have a team by that name, didn't he?
Yeah.
But, I mean, really, and, and maybe part of what I'm asking us of us right now is we don't have all the answers. But let's start to figure out where we need to go to get some of the answers, you know? Can we get somebody to volunteer to go out and, you know, do some focus groups with some of our members? And, you know, talk to some people that have traditionally gone to Narums and that do have it. And, you know, how would you participate? And I think we'll get a variety of stuff. And sure, the, the crowd that is always going to Narum, if we offer it virtually, some of them are going to drop off and say, oh, well, if I can stay home and do this, that's probably the way I would do it. But then there's others of us that that would continue to participate in a live fashion. If we have a Narcon at a hotel and we only get 50 people that want to be there live for, for an initial one, so be it. Let's see if that's a realistic, you know, is that a realistic model that we could replicate and move forward? So I guess part of what I'd really like to push us and we need to reach out and talk to some people and get, get ideas of how do we change this whole paradigm? And I'll continue to push hard on Narum and contest flying. I continue to believe that having the virtual Narum last year did more to open up contest flying to more NAR members than pretty much anything we've done over the last 10 or 15 years. Why can't we capitalize on that? And and I'm not meaning to step on toes, but it is a different paradigm than traditionally how we've declared a national winner. But that's okay. Can we re-craft competition flying to allow us to have me be able to fly at Great Meadow and everybody else fly it, or the majority of people fly at local fields, but still have a host field for the people that want to do the in-person stuff? And, you know, yes, there's all kinds of potential baggage with that. But hey, does that bring more people to competition flying so that when it's in their neighborhood that they're going to fly competition? So I guess what I'm pushing for is we push out of the mold and at least help each other explore what can we do differently that would, would enable us to look at how we present our national events in a different way?
Well, if we don't try, we won't learn.
And I'm, we have, I don't know how many, because I keep on going back, but, but certainly the people who are listening in, if you have ideas, we'd love to hear, you know, what you all think. But Ed, what do you think? I mean, you've, you've had to roll your sleeves up on this a couple of times.
I've, I've been otherwise occupied and not I've, I've been otherwise occupied and not listening closely. It's KJ's fault. It's KJ's fault. I'm calling him out. I'm sorry. So give me some.
Seriously, I mean. So what can we start to do as a board and, and as a service to the members to, to really explore, how do we change the way we deliver these national events to our members?
Well, I would, I would play off of Carol's suggestion. I guess to me, I would sort of slow roll it. We could make, we could, we could with the upcoming NSL, if it, if it is held, if we're not prevented from holding it, to see if we can find a volunteer, you know, to find a volunteer with, with adequate enough equipment to do, to work with him, give him the support necessary to, however he wants to set up the streams. And Carol, you know way more about this than I do. But, you know, if he can post the schedule, I'm going to stream from NSL at these times on these days. I'm going to, I'm going to go through vendor tents on this day, on these hours. I'm going to troll the, the flight line. I'm going to talk to rocket modelers at the check-in table. You know, we could go to Narum and go, then let's give R and D and, and the scale rooms, you know, and the craftsmanship rooms a shot, take it in small pieces and see what we can build from there.
The nice thing about some of these options, too, is even with a published schedule, if people miss that particular window of the schedule, it will be recorded for viewing later. You know, just, and this is just one little data point, but I can tell you that the manufacturer's form from Narum last year is, again, we don't have much on our YouTube channel, but the viewing on that just skyrocketed. I mean, within a couple of days, like people want to see that. And unless, you know, I, I know Chris Taylor has attended a lot of events in his livestream and he hasn't been able to attend the last few. But, you know, something like that, it's, while I completely love all of the support that Chris has given, you know, it seems like the organization hosting the event should be able to take on more of making sure that that happens and not just relying on one person who, if he isn't able to attend, all that information isn't shared. So I, you know, I personally, I, I think that we can do it. It's, you know, learning. And I like Ed's idea of maybe not, maybe jump in with one foot, not two. You know, there's, there are certainly plenty of things that we can make virtual, whether it's at NSL, Narum. My suggestion would be that we don't triangle 100%, you know, it's a, I don't know. If we have 10 events, maybe we set a goal of virtualizing five of them. And if we can get seven, great. But I think if we aim for 10 and we can only get eight, you know, then we will beat ourselves up a bit, too.
Let us not beat ourselves up. This is supposed to be a fun hobby, but I, I think you're, you're spot on, Carol. You know, I mean, launch events are hard to do virtually. You know, part of, a big part of it is we get together and there are a lot of people launching together. But maybe it doesn't need to be too horribly hard. I mean, equipment can be rented, say for NSL, for a few days. And it's not horribly expensive to rent good equipment for just a few days. You know, lot of, lots and lots and lots of camera shops do that. I said horribly expensive. It's not going to come for pennies, Ed. But.
Your, your rental rates mileage may vary.
Possibly true. On the other hand, my DSLR would do a decent job of sitting on a tripod and.
Absolutely.
Or walking around.
Same way.
But, but a video capable DSLR and all is certainly quite a step from somebody's cell phone.
Yeah, it is.
Right.
Oh.
But as an example, I have video capable.
Yeah.
So I have that DSLR and I have a Wi-Fi card. So, and my skills are pretty basic. It's just, I guess what I'm saying is there's a few of us who could be there, that that could be that baby step.
Right.
Where we could try it.
And they claim to everybody that we're trying it and, you know, if it, if it fails, we'll figure out a different way or conclude that this doesn't work, but nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Not wanting to necessarily go off on a tangent you weren't wanting discussed, John, because I know you're focusing right now on, I think we're talking mostly about the virtual streaming intersections with our three major events. The flip side, too, is that Todd and I have talked about is, and any of the members are well aware, probably are already thinking these sort of things, at least I, I, I pretty much hope or expect they are, is the ability to coordinate with the NAR. And if we have members that want to, they want to, they want to stream to the membership, a, a build session on a kit, a technique or something of that nature that wouldn't typically maybe make it into a, a Narcon presentation per se. There's no reason why we couldn't coordinate with membership and say, you know, John Smith is going to, we could put it up on the webpage, hey, members, John Smith is going to be streaming a build session on the, on the new mega Dare Red Max of lock precision or whatever, you know, on this date from his shop. And if you want to see what he's doing in this build, here's, here's the information you need to tune into that. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of potential in our members sharing content with members that, you know, is really puts the tendrils out and can build community and value under the NAR, you know, banner.
And we could also use more content on our YouTube channel, you know? So if we have members who are interested, like Ed said, in, you know, building something, or I know Michael from Mad Cow is doing a great session on motor retention, even something like that. If people are willing to record those, you know, when I'm going to say decent quality video, doesn't have to be an hour long, 10 minute little clips that we can put onto YouTube would be fantastic.
Would this, would this be something we could reach out? I, I'm thinking of things like the build videos. And I know James Duffy has made kind of a specialty of kit openings. And Kevin, you, you know, you know Duffy better than I, and you've seen the content. Is that the sort of thing, with that kind of thing uploading to YouTube channel with a little bit of an NARC little approval? Is that, is that something worth doing? Or am I, am I, am I getting a little weirded out here? Getting going a little too deeply?
Well, I think that that's definitely something that's, that's, we could approach someone about. James, I think, does that, you know, because he likes to, but he also has his own channel for distributing that stuff. So would he want to do that for the NAR? Maybe. All right, who just answered? Who just, who just stole the question I would type in and answer to?
I had that problem, too.
Doing that. Stop clicking answer live. All right, thanks. But that, that, you know, yeah, I think I, like, we could ask James. I think he's on this. He was on earlier. But, but yeah, you know, that sort of content I think is compelling.
So how about if we all identify and implement, and by that I mean coerce or whatever it takes, you know, one, at least one. Yeah, something that we can post up as, as a virtual kind of thing between now and Narum. And I think we could run the gambit if, if I choose to get a GoPro and walk all over the place at the National Sport Launch and talk up all these people and end up with a whole bunch of interesting or, and or goofy stuff, maybe we can see how that goes. Or, I don't know, Becky, well, it won't happen before Narum, but I'm thinking R-List. What, could we come up with something interesting or several interesting things stemming from R-List that people would find useful? Because there's a whole bunch of people that go, boy, I'd love to go out to Blackrock sometime.
Yeah, we've tried that in the past and it just didn't, we couldn't find enough people to run around with the camera interviewing the teams and stuff like that. But I do agree, R-List is a good one because of all the education there. That if we could find the ability to do that, like you said, your GoPro or whatever, and maybe we don't do it live, maybe it's just something we load up later. It doesn't have to be right at that moment.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I'm even thinking, you know, with what goes on, so it takes us, when we're at a leisurely pace, we can do it, you know, an hour to two to prep a rocket, to get ready for a student team to, to do the launch, or if we're really hurried, we can do it in half that time. And, you know, just that process in and of itself for, you know, capturing different parts of Joe and John's rocket from, from last summer and just that evolution of that one little piece. I mean, I was, you know, I, I was amazed and I heard all of the, the lead up to it the whole time they were working on it.
Yeah. And, and that's exactly it. They, as they're building it and, and stuff. If you're doing it just in the background, because you got to remember, you don't want to interrupt them as they're doing their prep work and that kind of stuff. But having the camera just there and letting people see it later, just not live. But you also have the, the problem. You've got to make sure that you're not, you know, if you're, in some cases, their prep may not be going as well as they think it is going. And you don't want to have any language issues on the camera. If that's politically.
You know, I hadn't, hadn't, hadn't thought about that, but yeah. Keeping it Disney compatible or running live could be a challenge when things are going wrong. That's a good point, Becky. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, it's, it, oh, go ahead, Lynn, sorry.
I was just wondering, do they have to necessarily all be live? And we could livestream a town hall or a manufacturer's thing, but wandering around, you might want to do a little bit of lightweight editing anyway on the video so you don't make people walk 100 meters with you from one place to the next. You know, there's not much fascination in that, quite honestly. Which would give you a chance to check the language while you took out the, the boring parts.
Right, that's why I was saying.
You know.
Yeah, that's why I was saying not. Yeah, don't do it live when you're, when you're going up to, unless the person knows that's what you're doing. And they just are concentrating and, and, and you're just there in the background. But the part about with a Blackrock is it is such a unique place that you could be doing other things just from afar. And just showing the 18 different shade tents that have 120 students just busy doing all of their stuff in their different languages. And because it's not always, they're not always doing it in English. And so if you go up to those teams, they are supposed to do it in English. They can maybe explain what they're doing as long as you're telling them upfront, just not standing in the background.
Okay. Any other thoughts? And James, I think you're entirely correct that doing everything as livestream, some of our remote sites can be challenging. And I guess I would question even some of the hotels that we've stayed at. I'm not sure that they had the capacity to do live streaming, but anyhow, other, any last thoughts or suggestions? Do we make this Ed's problem since he's not paying attention?
I think he heard you.
Indeed, I did. And indeed, I have nothing to say. I relinquish my minutes.
All right, well, Ed, I'm going to keep pounding you and I think I have.
What a surprise.
As Todd works for me, I have an ally. But I want to keep pushing and I guess I would suggest to all of, all of the board members and, you know, reach out to people you know and challenge somebody to come up with some, you know, some content that we can, you know, really start to take advantage of technology and really put stuff out that, you know, lots of people can see. And I think in doing that, while I, my preference would be that we don't do this slowly, that we would jump into it with both feet and do it right away. I do understand the, the reality of things, but let's push ourselves to, oh, Ed, you curmudgeon. It, let's push ourselves to start doing things and get innovative. And hopefully we'll spur some others on to be innovative and, you know, get some others interested that, that can really take this to the next level and help us out. And I think one thing along those lines, Carol, and for the more technical people is help somebody like me, like I get that I don't want to use my iPhone camera, although it's probably better than a lot of cameras I've owned in my life. But let's come up with some quick and easy guidelines for people to do. And, you know, and can we identify either a program that helps us edit or somebody that can help us do some minimal kind of editing to, to really sort of chop this down? I mean, if people can do it on, oh, go ahead.
Well, you, you mentioned an iPhone. The, the reasonably new iPhones and most reasonably new cell phones actually have pretty good cameras and can do video. If you respect what, you know, the limitations of it, which is a teeny, teeny tiny sensor. So you're not going to get spectacular low light. You have to pay attention to that. But it, it's not super hard. And there, I think, are some guidelines out there for making good videos with your cell phone cameras. So that's not something that would necessarily, you know, be, oh, no, we're not going to do a cell phone. You, you could. We just need to know the gear. And there are places where a cell phone might not work so well because the lighting isn't good, like in a hotel conference room or hotel banquet room. It's got a paw up.
So with respect to what you're saying, Becky, I, I get it. I mean, Apple's running some very flashy ads about the level of production value that you can get out of an iPhone 52 or whatever model number they're on now. My only pushback on that is that you've got a, you've got to dovetail with a person who has that. And are they willing then to be this cameraman, you know, to, to do this, you know, virtual streaming on behalf of the organization? And for the organization to own one of those phones, I think if they're outright, they're like a thousand, 1,200 bucks. So I don't know that we're necessarily going to want to buy one. I bet for a lot less money, to be perfectly blunt, you could go out and find used video capable DSLRs. Nikon's got a host of them. I've got an older 5D Mark II Canon that I could literally at this point donate to the association for this work, for that sort of thing. But the point is, those would all be less expensive than, you know, like buying a latest iPhone if we wanted control over the device. And I know John says, no, we don't. But then again, you got to find somebody with the device. That wants to.
I think there's, I think there's multiple devices out there that could fit the bill.
Ed, this is Lynn speaking. I don't think it was Becky. I'm, I'm sorry, John, I interrupted. You forgive me.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Dress me down, Lynn.
No, I was leaning at, I wasn't thinking so much in terms of the NAR having control of the device. But as we begin this, to look for, and it wouldn't take but a handful of people who have devices and are willing to have a go at it. You know, the crowd trends to being technical and there's more than one photographer in the group. I, I don't think it would be that hard to make a beginning.
Right. If all these idiots on TikTok can do it, I'm certain there must be several out of the 7,400 members that we have, or even the, the nine members on our board that could do something in a similar fashion.
Who will be the NAR's first social influencer?
And most of us own the clubs that have.
I was going to say for someone who's.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So someone who's done content generation, the issue is not in the recording. The issue is in post. And then if you're going to be trying to do something where you're doing a livestream, you need to have sufficient bandwidth at whatever event it is. So, you know, if it's just, you know, hey, we want to point a camera at someone and whatever happens, happens, that's easy. Anyone, you're right, anyone can do that. But, you know, I used to do for our local hobby shop, you know, a 10 minute little, you know, scripted video and the post-production on that was massively more than what it took to do that. So just keep that in mind. And that's a specific skill set. And, you know, you know, yes, you could find people that do that as a hobby. But at what point are they willing to spend hours and hours and hours to do that for an event? So.
Okay, any other thoughts? Buzzkill, no, just kidding.
I know, I know. I mean, I like the idea of democratizing the content is one thing. But somewhat, you know, it has to get up to either one of our platforms. And that's right now is YouTube or Facebook or our website. And that means we have to do file transfer. That means we have to do editing. That means we have to do all sorts of things. So it's what happens after the image is recorded is the bigger, the bigger thing.
No, and I totally agree with you. I'm not trying to belittle that at all. I think you're entirely correct. But if we don't start trying to do some new things, we're going to continue to do the same old stuff. All right. Any last thoughts? So Todd, while you're away, we came up with 20 more jobs for you.
All of them are hard, Todd. You're muted, Todd.
You're muted. We're reading your lips.
Yeah, this has enough balls in the air that I'm already stressing, but so far, so good.
Good.
You know, John, on that.
We weren't expecting you to do it by three o'clock today.
Oh, well, here's my answer to all those things.
We're going to, I'm making a sign as we vote for Ed.
That would be a firm pronoun, Todd?
Um, John, let me, let me reach out to some other organizations as, you know, we're not the only ones doing this. So I feel like I want to talk to other organizations and see how they're going to bring, you know, bring their conventions in. I can also reach out, I have tech support at Excel Events. And, you know, if anybody knows how they're morphing their live events into a, into a content, they would know. The one thing that I want to point out is if we try to do this live streaming, imagine this. You're going to have three live video feeds off of a hotel Wi-Fi that have to work. There's no way. It isn't going to work. It's not something we can control and it's not something you can jump to cellular to make that work. So just let me, I'll put that on my, the 22nd thing on the list and.
Wait a second, 5G isn't the answer to everything?
You haven't been chipped yet, Ed.
I'm so disappointed.
Well, let's just, let's wait till we get to the, till we've used all of your unlimited packet. And then you get throttled down. See how you like that. I'll send you a letter.
So we had a comment about finding people that have the resource. There was some chatter on the NAR sections forum a while back about people that were very interested and excited about working on some sort of multimedia sort of presentation. But the idea would be we need to get those people at the events and they need to be able to do that, you know, as it's happening, as opposed to get a project that they're working on. So I saw some of that chatter too. And, you know, I just don't know, you know, it seems like there's people that are really super excited about doing it. And it's just a matter of getting them, you know, hooked in and doing that.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's keep pushing towards this. And definitely with respect to coming up with hybrid events and doing more virtual. I think if nothing else, the success that we're having with this weekend's event speaks volumes to the fact that people are very interested in getting much more into the, in, you know, using virtual content like this as a way to communicate and to connect, so. All right, any last words on this? Carol, you want to jump into a new thing and talk about bylaws?
Oh, I bet.
Ed, I haven't had a chance to make my sign. Hold on a second here. Just going to say I vote for Ed.
Carol, I can't hear, wait, did you mute yourself? I'm getting nothing. I'm hearing nothing.
Just say yes, Ed.
Say yes. You should know this now. What could go wrong? I know the feeling. Okay, so John and I had talked and we know that we've, I think we've discussed this as a group before too, knowing that the bylaws need an update. So I did a quick look through, gave up with a few things, and I know that there's more. I know there are some things that I missed. I need to go back through, but a couple of things that just popped out initially, a few thoughts. We need to, I feel, we need to add something to address how members can make motions during our meetings. One second, I'm looking for, I had notes written in two places. I'm trying to gather them here. I think we need to add something on how members can make motions. A couple of other thoughts too, we're adding a paragraph to state that the NAR website is the official location for association news and announcements. I know that, I don't think that we addressed your, here, let me go back and double check that. But, you know, the information regarding the organization is on the website. That's, it's not, I'm not tweeting out official announcements or anything. It's on the website. And I think it would be beneficial to state that in our bylaws, that that is where we are going to have official announcements. I thought it would be beneficial to also add something in the Public Affairs Committee section that the NAR will maintain social media accounts as deemed necessary or appropriate, as deemed appropriate by the Public Affairs Committee. That's typically where it's been falling under anyway. And I, my suggestion is to word it somewhat vague so that we can have various social media accounts that don't necessarily require full board approval. And I'm just going to make one example. We maintain Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and YouTube. I also had set up a MeWe account, not because we're active on MeWe, but because I wanted to make sure that someone else couldn't set up a NAR account on our behalf. So a couple of years ago, when I started hearing some chatter about this new social media platform called MeWe, I went and grabbed that group so that we have it under our control if we were to ever move to that. But if nothing else, we don't have someone perhaps setting that up and, you know, not running it in the way that we would like it to be. Couple of other things that jumped out at me is there's a reference to a nomination committee. And I don't believe we've used that for a few years. So that might be something that we should review and decide if we still need that. And then there's also a reference to a technology committee, which I believe we have, but it's not something that we list on the website. And then one last thing, and this is just kind of a picky thing that could go either way. But throughout the document, it references him. I heard John chuckle, you know, maybe, maybe we could bring that forward and have it be she and he or him and her. And again, that's not something that I would suggest updating if we weren't making other changes. But maybe we could make it a little more gender neutral. Additional things that need to be addressed in there, those were the things that jumped out at me pretty quickly.
Okay.
I would, I was getting all that in my notes, Carol, and, you know, we're surrounded on all four sides by the 21st century and the bylaws truly don't reflect that. So, yeah, I think, I think you're making some good points, right? Just even as a starting point, this is some stuff we need to be addressing. I'm glad, I'm glad you caught all that.
I'd like to also point out relative to an issue I've been working on in the background, section, section nine, article, article three, where it refers towards the latter part of that paragraph that all classes of members shall be entitled to participate in the rights and privileges of the association except as expressly provided herein. In this digital age, the rights and privileges to participate, we need to, we need to, I think this is an area we need to understand or clarifying the bylaws as to what do we mean by that? I'll take Facebook as an example, although that's a public group that we, we maintain as a courtesy to the membership. What is the right and privilege? Sport rocketry is the right and privilege, given the fact that we have identified that as example for years as a member benefit. And it's referred to, at least indirectly, I think, in other policies as being the official, you know, the official voice of the NAR, the official method of communication. You know, Facebook lies in this new digital world of what is it exactly in terms of a right and a privilege to membership access? So I just want to point that one out to you, Carol.
Ed, which section were you referring to? I didn't get it written down quickly enough.
All right, it's article, you're in article three, section nine.
Okay, thank you. I'll look at that one specifically.
Do we, do we need all the classes of members that we have and/or can we make some changes to be more reflective of modern times?
I mean, I'm not going to go there.
As in, as in, is it time to combine junior and leader? Is that what you're driving at, John, or am I misinterpreting where you're going with this?
I think we should look at it. I don't know that I would recommend that explicitly, but, and I know we've done it, like, the, right now, senior membership has two different dues classifications. So you have members that are under 25 get a reduced dues rate and members over the age of 25, the full senior rate. So my point is, can we just look at that and make it a little bit more consistent? And even, I mean, does it necessarily have to mesh explicitly with the competition categories, which for the most part aren't being filled except with a combination of junior and leader members?
I added that to my list.
I would also suggest, like, let's take a look at all the committees and do we really need all these as explicit? As opposed to what committees do we really need as a, as an organization? Versus which ones can be ad hoc and go back and forth at the pleasure of the board?
Carol?
Yeah.
I'd also add, as it's pertinent to me, section 11 under, yeah, article 11, other committees. The National Events Committee shall have its duties, the organization administration, blah, blah, blah. It basically says that the National Events Committee, the members of that committee include the Chairman of Contest and Records and the directors of, or of the various approved national events. As though I would know at all times that there were assigned event directors to all three national events that would form on a committee with me and the current contest board chairman for national events work, which I can't speak for previous people who led national events. But you don't know who the necessary components are filling the roles of event directors or contest director or whatever. To have all those three known and installed and able to form part of the body of that committee as it's currently defined, that, I would say that largely doesn't happen. So that's a section that in my opinion needs to be rewritten, needs, needs attention.
Okay, and I can reach out to you directly too. You know, if it's just last sentence that needs to be removed or revised or, you know, I think if people have sections that, or I'm sorry, committees that they're involved in, you know, like public affairs. So I'm the head for public affairs. I can look at that and say that we're not addressing social media. You know, back in 2011, when these were last revised, it wasn't quite as big of a deal. So to me, instead of making social media completely separate article or something, you know, to me, that falls underneath that committee. I think we're each most familiar with our own committees. If people want to take that action for each committee that they lead and determine if this writeout makes sense for them. Like when I read through section activities, there's a few things I think that need to be, that could be added, not necessarily. And, you know, we probably don't want to make them too specific either.
Right. In the sense that I don't believe there's any assignment to an individual, section 13, the Joint Manufacturers Association Council. I don't even remember the last time that committee or council operated. Obviously, you know, people with a far better memory like Tripper Bunny probably would know. But I don't think the Joint Manufacturers Association has existed for, I don't know, maybe 20 years?
I thought that John had that one.
Do we need that? Do we need section 13? That's, I'm just raising that point to you. For consideration.
Section 13 of that article?
Yes, correct.
Hold on one second. I'm going to ask John real quick. John, do you have Joint Manufacturers Association Council under you?
Probably. I don't know that it's. It hasn't been active, yeah, I don't think it's a current need, nor do I think it's been active for a long period of time.
Okay. So maybe that's one of those.
And to me, we can set up, there probably are a number of committees that we need to have that really are mission critical to the organization. All the rest of them can be fulfilled on an ad hoc basis and really don't need to be a part of the bylaws. It's just, just my opinion. Yeah, and Tom's right, that, that Joint Manufacturers Committee, I do remember Chip having a couple of meetings with the manufacturers. And I don't know why it, it didn't gain traction and continue to take off. Okay, we don't have to, so Carol, I think one thing we need to assign or you can choose, but I think you need a committee of at least three people to help you to really go through these and come up with some recommendations and a process that we can present this to the membership. You know, ideally at the summertime meeting, if that's our desire to upgrade these.
Since I get to choose, Ed, are you busy?
I had a feeling.
I'm kidding. Okay, I've got that.
John knows I have, John knows I have an interest in this. We're going to have ourselves a little offline chat sometime after Narcon anyway, the three of us, so maybe discuss it more then.
Okay, that sounds good.
So to answer Jonathan's question about company types, there is a company membership type. Right now, that looks like the majority of those were set up for organizations like schools to join as a rocket club. But I can look through more of that. There's about 236 in the, in the database right now.
In the Manufacturers and Corporate Members section?
Well, it's, it's, there's the membership type of individual or company. So it's the ones that are listed as company membership type.
You said there's about 230?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And actually, Kevin, that brings up a. Okay, Lynn.
This thing maybe that speaks to having an educational institution category just to separate them from commercial entities.
Yeah, the first page is high schools, middle schools, the National Air and Space Museum Library, Estes Tax Corporation. St. Anthony High School.
Some of those were set up. Yeah, and some of those were set up so that they could just get the magazine.
Yeah.
But.
NASA.
What, where NASA does it go? But that brings up a good point, and it's a little bit tangential, but I know Jonathan's on here. But we do need to have some of our power users who are using Neon to really take a look at it, and is there a way that we can go through and purge stuff that we no longer use as well as? I'm convinced that we really need to go back to Neon and get them to reload the data in there in a totally different manner so that it gives us the ability to be a little bit more functional. But if nothing else, if Kevin, if you and Jonathan could, and with input from like Todd and Marie, come up with some desires and improvements to Neon in, in our system, that then we could take to Neon to figure out what, if any, would cost to get and elicit a change. I think that would be a good thing.
And by the way, the NASA that's part of the, the membership looks like it's a section, the Nashville Area Space Modeling Association. So I think we're using the company field in our database to track sections, which wouldn't help us track people like manufacturers or corporate members of the NAR. So, you know, as to whether or not we still need that as a membership category, I don't know.
Well, I think some things got thrown in there just for convenience at the time, or there, there may not be a true rhyme or reason for how some of the stuff is organized in there.
Sure.
If you only have two choices and you're not an individual, then you must be a company.
Right. And Lord knows I.
Yeah, but I think, I think the question, I think the question was more about what was in the bylaw in section, article, whatever, section seven, article three, section seven. So I'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Well, but I still want us to look at Neon as a whole, and, you know, is there a better way to organize it and make it more functional? Okay, any other thoughts on bylaws? What am I missing? Any other things that the, the board would like to bring up and discuss? Glenn?
Um, no, I don't have anything right now. Thank you, John.
Okay, Kevin?
Uh, no, I think we've hit a lot of the stuff that we need to talk about earlier, so.
Okay, Ed?
I'm good at the moment.
Good. Mark?
Uh, no, everything, everything I came to the meeting with, we've already discussed. We're good. Thanks.
Good. All right, and we already have your, all the minutes approved.
That, that being number one, I'll have these, we are, I'm, I'm already on, what, page nine in 11 point calibre? So it's going to be a while to get these polished and put out to anybody in draft form. Don't, don't expect, don't expect this in your real time.
Oh, no, no, I meant we've already approved all the past minutes.
Right, right. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, please, please be patient with this round. It's, it's, it's going to take me a couple of weeks at least, so.
Okay, no worries. Carol?
I don't know that we need to discuss it now, but you and I had talked about starting to look at some succession planning, just making sure that we have committees covered where we might only really be one deep.
So dead everywhere?
Kind of, but some can be, can be filled a little easier than others. If I win the lottery and move to the wilderness and off grid, you know, I, basically, it's handing over some logins for me. And again, not something we need to discuss today. It was just something that John and I had talked about, and I wrote myself a note that something we need to look at.
Okay. All right, and Becky?
I don't have anything at this time.
Cool. All right, well, open it up. Does anybody that's just observing the meeting or attending have anything that they'd like the board to discuss? Can't tell how long we should wait for people busily typing or.
Yeah, the, the lag is usually about 20 seconds, but the, maybe they've all ran over to, we do have a session about 3D printing happening right now. They probably ran over to that.
Doing here.
What am I doing here? I'm out of here. Bye.
And if they're looking at the schedule, not expecting member concerns to come up for another 45 minutes, that might be part of it as well.
Well, we didn't really publish the schedule, so.
Oh, then, then that's a non-issue. Okay, cool. I, I missed that. And not that it matters, but we're now approaching 520 people.
Yeah, we're what, 515?
That's fabulous.
Yep.
That's terrific. Yeah, we're not the most interesting thing going on right now. Let's be real.
Yeah, that being, that being said, I think we have great attendance for a board meeting. I mean, I, I was, I was pretty impressed with, with the number of people listening in.
Yeah.
I was only able to see that list some of the time. I can see all of us, but I know we're here.
It depends on if you're looking at the, the main session or the backstage. There's two channels for us. So you want to look at the session?
I, I'm. Okay, let me see what I'm doing here.
Yeah, you would click on chat, make sure that session is highlighted, and then people.
Now I've got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, if there are any burning desires, people can bring them up later or send, send us an email, and we'll try to answer it as quickly as possible. So I don't have anything else, so I think we can adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey.
Aye. Members, go enjoy the, the conference.
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for, for taking your time today.
Thanks again for all your work. This is fantastic.
And so far, so good. I hope you enjoy it.
Yeah, great job, guys.
It's been wonderful. I should. Hold on, we just got, someone did post their 3D printing.
Yeah, people are, we're getting, we're getting quick thank yous. That's kind of folks. Tom and Ken, you're welcome.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep, thank you all, and we'll talk to you all soon.
All right.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Kevin?
Carol?